Hi everybody, a warm welcome to everyone to the Vary session. My name is Riksha Sharma, your English educator at ANA Academy and I give you all a very warm welcome to this very particular session. Hello everybody, hi guys, hi, I am my boy, hey Nishtha, hi everyone, a very good afternoon. I hope that everyone is doing super duper great and your Saturday is literally going super nice in all your studies, right? Hey everybody, hey Dharmendra, hi guys, how are you all doing everyone? I give you all a very warm welcome to this very particular session wherein we are going to deal with the topic reported speech. And you know very well that this is one of the very important topics from your examination point of view and a little bit confusing as well. So I am here to clear all your confusions today. You all can come up with any question that you all have related to the topic. And I am also going to tell you all like how do you need to memorize everything so clearly? Alright people, hey, hi Shazee, hi Shaboom, hello everyone. Hi guys, a very good afternoon to everybody right there, welcome to the Vary session already, hey Aditha, hi, welcome to the Vary class. And it's very, hey dear, how have you been everyone, how are you all doing? Very good afternoon, Vishnu, hey Krishna, good afternoon, a very cold welcome, why do you, why welcoming me in such a cold manner? So hey Krishna, hey Neharika, hello everybody, welcome to the session, hey Tisha. Hi everyone, really Roshan, okay, you guys are having your own convo, okay? Alrighty people, I welcome you all once again, alrighty, we are going to do the video topic reported speech today. And I am gonna share the final tips with all of you, so it's gonna be a special session. Make sure that you all are sharing the link of the session with all your friends because at the end of the session, I am gonna have a quiz with all of you. There just 10 questions wherein I am gonna check that whether you guys have understood or not whatever I have told you all. Alright people, okay, Aditha, thank you so much, hey Kush, hi dear, hello really, uh Roshan, okay? Alrighty people, so I am sure you guys know my name, I have done masters in English from Delhi University. I have been guiding a lot of you to be super duper amazing in your communication skills. And definitely to score good marks in your academics because that's the primary motive, right everyone? Moving ahead guys, now you will all find me on the channel ANA Academy 9 and 10 experts, okay? So I have been taking all these sessions therein, right at 2pm everyone and like most of the times you will also find me live at 5pm in the evening as well. So make sure that you all are definitely following me there on that particular channel ANA Academy 9 and 10 experts. And this is the telegram link for that very particular channel, okay? So kindly join in because we are coming up with amazing sessions for everybody and I don't want anyone of you to lose out anything. Because you know English is one of the subjects wherein you can get like, like 40 on 40 very easily this time. And this is again one of the subjects that accelerate your score. What does that mean? That this is going to increase your score, right? It can help you boost your very percentage, right everyone? Hey hello, hi everybody already, really Roshan, oh my god, that's so sweet of you. And I take it as a compliment and a good comment, so thank you, okay? So moving ahead guys, ANA Academy subscription features, we have got a lot of features for all our dear and darling students. Make sure that you all are definitely following us and you guys are joining hands with us because we are catering the best for all our dear children, okay? You get to learn like from the comfort of your home unlimited access, that means like we are providing an access to all the courses. Unlimited access to all the courses, so herein I am not only talking about English, I am talking about your social science, your maths, your science, your Hindi. So we have got all the subjects for all of you, so you don't need to worry now, okay? Then top educators, highly qualified teachers are there sitting here for all of you. Regular doubt clearing and answer writing sessions would definitely be there everybody. And exhaustive coverage of the entire syllabus, guys, you must have noticed in your CBSE sample paper. There is a question wherein it says that why is this particular sentence being exclaimed at the end, you know? So that means that you need to like put a concentration on even a period in a, like on a colon, on a semicolon when it comes to English. And I am definitely gonna do there, I mean do that for all of you. Make sure you guys are definitely going ahead with it, okay? So mentorship and guidance would be there, study material, practices, life test series and badge courses. So daily practice sections, weekly mock test series, live quizzes, daily MCQ and subjective test series. Oh my god, we have got a lot for all of you, so kindly go ahead with the best. Coming to iconic unique subscription it is, personal mentor would be there for all of you. One-on-one interaction would be there between you and the educator. Live out solving sessions would be there, weekly reports, we are gonna tell you where exactly you are doing well and what are the key areas you need to work more on. Then parent connecting would also be there, don't worry, we are not gonna complain to your parents. Instead, we are definitely going to tell them that you are developing well. Then study planner, planning is always needed to succeed best in life and then all benefits of ANA Academy subscription would also be a part of your iconic subscription, okay? Now coming to the pricing of your like ANA Academy, herein we have got different monthly subscriptions. You guys can go ahead with anything that suits you the best. Beat 48 months, 36 months, 24 months, 18 months, 15 months, 12 months, nine months, six months or three months. PSH 10 is the code everybody, avail your 10% discount because they are always amazing. So you guys can go ahead with anything that suits you the best. Being your educator, I would like to tell you all try to go for a longer tenure, that's always beneficial, okay? Moving ahead, ANA Academy merch is starting right from today, mega mock test for CBSE town one board examination. Stand a chance to win prizes in scholarship worth 50 lakhs. November 27th is the starting date, it's gonna end on 30th of November, 5 to 6:30pm, go ahead with it. Now ask a doubt feature, winner's week offer has been extended, ask 10 doubts and win ANA Academy plus subscription. Free for 15 days valid till 28th of November, kindly make a use of it. Now all the 90s ANA Academy combat, take your shot at winning scholarship worth rupees 1 crore ANA Academy combat. Certificate of merit for 25, top 25 rankers, free light touch on Android and app, class 9 it is, timing is 11am and roll right away every Sunday. Now let's crack it, offer for plus subscribers, exciting mega offers for CBSE students of classes 6 to 12. By 12 month subscription gets 6 months free, by 24 month subscription gets 6 months free, flat 10% special discount only for first thousand subscribers. And ANA Academy free special class features, live real-time interaction using chat and emojis, ask the questions using the question tab. Live poll options for a quiz and poll leader vote, compete with your friends too. And I have got the special class today right at 8pm in the evening wherein I am gonna deal with the topic tenses and you all can ask me all the doubts. And I am definitely going to ask you all a lot of questions, okay? So final tips for reported speech special session it is guys, we are gonna begin and now just let me know what is the opposite understanding everybody? Alright, so guys just let me know, no, 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 no guys, we are gonna deal with the I mean concept before I go ahead with the quest, okay? Because that's how I will get an understanding, no, like if you guys are understanding or not, that is really needed. Okay, alrighty people, so guys come on, go ahead. Guys, we are gonna have the code right at the end of the session, okay? Before that, I am gonna just tell you all what is a reported speech, how do you need to remember everything? What are the rules, what are the things that you should immediately like, what, I mean what are the things that should immediately strike your mind? Okay, once you look at the topic reported speech, okay, so that is pretty important. Now moving ahead everybody, so beginning with the rules of the reported speech everyone. So you know reported speech is what guys, reported speech is something wherein we are reporting, alright? Like as in for example, you told me I am tired, okay? For example, Savita is telling me I am tired, now I have to say the same thing. To recow, how would I say that? I will say that Savita told me that she was tired, what did I do? I have retained the meaning, right everybody? Yes guys, I have retained the meaning clearly, right? I have kept the meaning intact but I have changed certain words in order to just tell somebody else what was being told to me. So that is what reported speech, you have got two speeches, direct speech and indirect speech. Direct speech is the first-hand account which I am telling directly to all of you. And indirect speech is what that is being, like that is being told to someone else after hearing something. Okay, I am not well, now you are saying ma'am told me that she was not well, so you are saying this to somebody else. So indirect speech is your second-hand account, that means you are using your own words by retaining the actual meaning and then you are saying it to somebody else. Do you all get that? Yes everyone, do you all get that everybody, right? So now what are the certain rules, guys? First thing is remember the change in tenses. Second thing is you have to remember the change in modals, okay, modal verbs are there. Third thing, you have to remember the change in place and time. Everybody keep noticing the things that is literally important, okay? Then the fourth thing is that you have to just maintain the fact that you are understanding the change in pronouns. Then the next thing is you have to understand the changes which are there in your imperative sentences and in your interrogative sentences, okay? All these things are going to come up in your examination, for that you need to have a very good understanding of what is a reported speech. What are the conversions that are taking place and how you need to come to the right answer? Okay, so everyone just make sure you all are listening to me so carefully, you know there are different tenses, right? And we need to remember all the tenses correctly. First is your simple present tense guys, the entire, I mean the entire thing. I mean you are going to get the entire thing related to your reported speech. Once, once you guys understand that how exactly your present tense is changing into the past tense, okay? So it is simple present, it changes into your simple past, how do you know that? For example, if I am saying I like chocolates, okay? So you are saying you have to assume it is she said, okay? And then definitely there is a comma and everything is in your inverted commas, okay? Kindly assume this because you know direct speech is a speech wherein we are writing the direct words of the speaker under your inverted commas. That gives you an idea that here we are talking about the direct words of the speakers. Alright people, is this making sense to everybody? Until there, that's gonna take place tomorrow, is this clear to everybody? Say yes or no in the comment section so that I would have a confirmation that you all are literally listening to me, okay? So herein it says I like chocolates and this is the first form of the verb. Now you are gonna translate, sorry, you are gonna transform it into your indirect speech by saying she said that she liked chocolates. So what did you do? You have kept here the second form of the verb, so what is the rule? Simple present changing into simple past, first form of the verb is changing into the second form of the verb, that's it. Do you all get that? Everyone, do you all get that? Now, your present continues, it is am living, okay? It can be am, it can be are or it can be is according to the sub-chain. And then first form of the verb plus ing, this is your present continuous, right? It changes into your past continuous wherein we have was or we have were plus we have first form of the verb an ing, alright? So guys, what is the second rule? Everyone, first rule is simple present changing to simple past. Second rule, your present continues changing to past continues. Third rule, present perfect we are coming to, haven't seen, that means has or have plus third form of the verb is coming up. Which is changing into had plus third form of the verb, what do you see? I haven't seen Rubina, what is it getting into, I mean what is it getting transformed into? He said that he hadn't seen Rubina, alright? So you are using had plus third form of the verb, so what is the third rule? Present perfect changing into past perfect, right? Then we have present perfect continues, it says I have been waiting. So what is the rule here? It is had or has plus third form of the verb which is usually been and plus first form of the verb plus ing, that's the rule everyone. That's a cutlier rule guys, yes? So this is going to be changed into had plus been plus first form of the verb an ing, simple. This is the last rule in case of your present tense. Your present perfect continues changing into your past perfect continues, that's it. So what are the things you need to keep in your mind? The very first thing related to your reported speech, that is the first step I would like to give you all. That the entire present tense is going to be changed into the same type of past tense. That's the straightforward rule when it comes to your reported speech, keep this in your mind. I hope that's making sense to everybody right there because it is literally an important thing. A lot of students, they make mistake, so the first form of the verb changing into the second form of the verb. Alright, this is your simple present, then present continues, then present perfect and present perfect continues. I hope that's clear, now we are moving to our past tense, alright, that was present. Now if you are done with your present tense noun, past tense is again easy, it shows that you have to keep it in your mind a bit, alright? Because there is no direct kind of a transformation, alright, you will have to see like what does it transform into? Now see everyone, simple past, what is simple past? We use the second form of the verb, okay? I bought a new house, this is your second form of the verb, what? Now she said that she had bought, so what are we doing? Had plus third form of the verb which is known as the past participle form of the verb everyone. I hope do you, you all agree? So what do we see, your simple past is changing into your past perfect, this is something that you have to memorize. Because you know your present perfect also changes into your past perfect, right guys? You know this present perfect also changes into past perfect, now your simple past also changes into your past perfect. So in your examination, if you have got a question wherein you have got the options, like both the options have got like simple past, sorry. Your past perfect from your simple past as well as your past perfect from your present perfect. So you have to select the option carefully, you should know. Guys, whenever you are dealing with the grammar noun, immediately in your mind should strike all the rules. They should be there in front of you and accordingly you are gonna select the right answer, is that clear guys? Now, past continues everybody, what is it? Past continues is was or were plus first form of the verb plus ing, that's your past continuous guys, that's pretty easy thing, right? So past continues changes into past perfect continues, what does that mean? Had, okay, had it is, been plus dancing, so this is going to be your had plus been plus first form of the verb plus ing. Pretty clear and so straightforward again. Past continues into past perfect continues and you know this again, present perfect continues also changes into past perfect continues. You have to keep this in your mind, then your past perfect guys, it doesn't change, this is literally an amazing one wherein you don't have to work a lot, right? So if past perfect is given to you, it is not going to change into your indirect speech. So if in your direct speech you see that it's a past perfect tense, then in your indirect speech it is going to be the same one, is that clear guys? Yes, is this clear to everybody? Everyone, right? So now what is the rule when it comes to your past tense? Simple past changes to past perfect, right? Your past continues changing to past perfect continues, again easy and past perfect remains same, so no confusion at all, okay? Guys, it's all about the tenses that you have to really be very careful about in your examination. So we are done with present, we are done with past, I hope that's clear, moving to the next one, your future, okay? So what exactly is the auxiliary verb that's literally doing amazing things in your future tense? That is your will guys, right? So you know what, what does will changes to? Will will change to your word in your entire, entire indirect speech, keep this in your mind. This is the third rule I am sharing with all of you in the context of your future tense, alright everybody, are you all getting that? Are you all getting that Samash, hey dear, hi. Are you all understanding this everyone? Just tell me in the comment section so that I would like have a confirmation that you all are getting it well, right? Okay, so what do we see? We see that will changes to your word, so you know simple future is what? Like the sentence is it will have will plus first form of the verb, right? So you are going to only look at will, nothing else, nothing else, your eyes should only be on will. This is the third important thing I am telling you all, okay? So we say that she said that Raman would buy a scooter, so what did we do? We have not even touched the main verb because we are not going to do that anyway. We are just going to touch will or shall, okay? If shall is there, you are gonna change it into should, alright? And if will is there, you are gonna change it into would, that's so straightforward. Alright, hey Malik, hi dear, is that clear, hey Kritika, hi. Clear to everybody? Yes, now future continues, you know what is the future continues, what is the sentence structure? It is will plus be plus first form of the verb plus ing. Now again, what did I tell you? Your eyes should only be on will, you should not be distracting yourself, okay? So he said that the children would be attending the class tomorrow, simple, okay? Then future perfect, will have, you are gonna change will have to would have, simple guys. Keep these things in your mind, so we are done with your present tense, we are done with your past tense, we are done with your future tense. It was pretty easy, not that difficult, remember the rules, all the rules should be on your tips, clear? Is that clear? Uh, we use be, sorry Savita, I didn't get your question dear, would you please again like tell me what exactly are you asking? Yes everyone, clear? Okay Tisha, thank you dear, alrighty, now let's move ahead everyone. Okay, now coming to the interrogative part of your examination wherein we have to deal with your reported speech. Okay, in perfect in future, Savita, you have to use perfect continuous tense. In your perfect continuous tense, this is what I told you now, okay, let me write it half for you. That in your present perfect continuous noun, present perfect continues will have your been. That means subject plus you will have, have plus been, okay? Plus first form of the verb plus ing and then object. For example, I have been teaching since morning, alright, or I had been teaching since morning on Thursday, alright, so that is had, alright? Yeah Tisha, okay, so there was this problem in the previous, okay, alrighty, yeah, you are right about that but herein we were more concentrating on the tenses. But yeah, that's very right, it should be the following day, alright, that's the right thing, okay? It should be the following day or the next day, okay? Yeah Savita, if you are talking about will have been doing, that's gonna be same, okay? That is not going to change in terms of the future perfect continues if you are talking about, alright? Alright Hotcha, thank you so much, that's so sweet of you, what an amazing tree, thank you. Alrighty people, moving ahead, interrogatives questions. You know guys, in your examination you will have the questions, okay? There are two types of questions everybody, one is your closed question, okay? And the another one is your open-ended questions, everybody listen to me super duper carefully, it's good for your good. Alright everyone, so now see, herein, okay Kushii already. So closed question is a question wherein your answer isn't just yes or no. For example, if I am telling you are you sleepy, you will say yes or you will say no. If I am asking you that are you reading the book, you are like yes or no, you are not going to give me an entire explanation. No, I was thinking or doing this but then I thought that I shouldn't be doing this, then somebody came, then I had a phone call. And I was talking on the phone and then my mom came and no, I don't need all that explanation. So why, why do we call these questions to be your closed questions? Because the answer is just in yes or no, alright? So just keep this in your mind, for example, whenever you are using it, no, like see, she asked me are you hungry? What do you see? I have used an auxiliary verb here, so whenever you would have the auxiliary verb such as is, you will have am, you will have are. Or you have has or you have have or do or does, okay, or did, alright, or any modal verb, right? For example, will you come tomorrow? Okay, so now any modal verbs, so you, that means that your question begins with an auxiliary, it doesn't begin with a WH word. In that context guys, you will never be using the joining conjunction, what is the important rule in that context? Don't use that at all as the joining conjunction, that would be wrong. Instead, you are going to use if or you are going to use whether, alright? That will not be there, so how are you going to transform the sentence into your indirect speech? She asked me if I was hungry, so you know are is your simple present everybody, right? I am changing it into your simple past and what is the rule? Immediately after writing if or whether, you are going to write the subject and then will come your verb. Please do not do the literal transformation, for example, the question is, look here everyone, the question is, she asked me are you hungry? And if you are saying she asked me, she asked me if was I hungry, that is wrong. Keep this in your mind, this is the next rule, this is the fourth rule I am sharing with all of you in the context of interrogatives. Whenever it's a closed question, you are going to use the joining conjunction if or whether. And immediately after if or whether will come your subject and immediately after subject will come your verb, keep this in your mind, is this clear? Uh Kushii, we are using if here because we have got the very auxiliaries as the, I mean the auxiliary verbs are being used in the beginning of the question. It's a closed question because the question just have an answer in yes or no. Whenever your questions have answer in yes or no, that's a rule in your English book that you have to go ahead with if or whether. Keep it in your mind, is this clear to everybody? Is this clear guys? Making sense, right? So this is the fourth rule I have shared with all of you in the context of your closed questions. Now coming to your open-ended questions, your open-ended questions are your WH questions. The questions which you make use of the WH word, for example, who, why, which, whom, where and also how, okay? Whenever you have a WH question, again the rule, never ever use that as the joining conjunction. If you are doing that, you are losing your mind because that WH word is going to work as what? That WH word is going to work as your joining conjunction, is this clear to everyone? What do you want me to explain again Aryan? What are you talking about? Are you talking about the closed question? Aryan, are you talking about the closed question dear? Yes, just let me know, are you talking about the closed question? Savita, open-ended basically means when we are talking about the fact that it has got a lot of explanations, it can have a lot of reasons. Okay, like closed-ended, what does it mean like closed-ended questions? Closed questions means when the answer is just going to be in yes or no. Okay, for example, if I am saying have you arrived? You will be like yes or no, you will not be saying something else that like no, 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 I am not, I have not arrived yet. Or no, 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 I am waiting for you, I am waiting for someone else. So closed questions always need the answer in yes or no, okay? Are you hungry, are you sleepy? Okay, is she doing her homework, is she sleepy? Okay, are you, are you understanding? Did you give my pen to her? Okay, so you have answered in yes or no. Open-ended, this phrase basically means that wherein you will demand one of the explanations. For example, if I am saying why have you not been attending the classes? You will be saying ma'am because I have got my examinations and I have been preparing for it. Okay, so it demands a proper explanation, do you get that? Do you get that? Alright, and now we are coming, Aryan, alright. So Aryan, closed questions are the questions wherein you get the answer in just yes or no. And in your closed questions, you know, if you have got one simple affirmative sentence, I am not well, how are you going to translate it? Ma'am said that she was not well, you have converted simple present into simple past, right? I am not well, she was not well, right? So you have used the joining conjunction by removing your comma, your inverted commas, you have added that, right? Because that's a just a simple sentence. But when we are talking about the interrogatives, that means when I am talking about the question statements wherein there is a question at the end. If I am saying are you studying on time, are you doing your homework on time, question mark, right? Here I have used an auxiliary right at the beginning of my sentence, what is the auxiliary verb, the helping verbs? And are is one of the helping verbs, right? That's not the main verb, right? So in these contexts, you are always going to use the joining conjunctions by removing comma and inverted commas. You are gonna use what? If or whether as the joining conjunction, that should not come, keep that in your mind. And immediately after writing the joining conjunction, you are going to write the subject and then comes the verb. Because no, now it is no more a question, that is turning into a statement. You, I had asked you the question, it was my question to you, if I am saying are you hungry? Okay, now you are telling the same thing to your friend that ma'am asked me if I was hungry. So that doesn't remain a question anymore because it was my original question to you. Now when you are saying this to your friend, you are turning my question into a statement. So whenever we turn the questions into a statement, we always write the subject right after the conjunction, is it clear? Is it clear now? Is it clear everybody? Are you getting that? Aryan, did you get that? I hope that's clear to you Aryan, yes? Yes, is that clear Aryan, I look for your. Satya my dear, I am using very simple words, I am not using anything exotic and I think that that is completely fine my dear. If there is something that's not making sense to you, let me know about it, okay? I am gonna simplify the language a bit more, alright? Uh Aryan, I hope that you got it because I have not got your confirmation yet dear, I have been waiting for your confirmation, I hope that's clear, right? Yes? Okay, I hope that's the answer already, okay people. Now we are moving to your open-ended question. Now, we are moving to your open-ended questions. Open-ended questions are the questions that begin with your W H word and how would you come to know that it's a it's an open-ended question, because it demands an explanation. If I'm saying that what have you been doing here since morning? You're gonna give me an answer in just one complete sentence, it's not gonna end in just yes or no. Are you getting that? So here and if I say she asked me, what are you doing? I'll be like she asked me what I was doing. I have not used that here, that would be wrong. All right, so open-ended question demands a proper explanation, everybody. To see, so, she asked me what I was doing, so what did I do? Immediately after my W H word, I have kept the subject and after subject, I have kept the verb. So that's the right way of doing it. Is this making sense, everyone? Is this making sense, everybody? Comprehension, don't worry, guys, I'll be telling you all, okay? Don't be worried about that, I'll be sharing all the tips, uh tips soon with everyone. Alrighty, people, okay, can you give any tips? So, what do you want me to, uh, tell you the tips, Anali? What do you want to improve comprehension? For comprehension, practice a lot, guys, you have to practice a lot, okay? You will have to read the comprehension, you have to get into the habit of reading. Right from the beginning of your sessions, I had been reiterating this in all my sessions. Guys, read. The more you read, your practice becomes like amazingly good. And that's what is needed, okay? Like if you're giving me two hundred words and I'm just reading it in three minutes and understanding it, that means that I'm literally good at reading. Right, guys? So I had always said this to everybody right there, please start reading. Because reading improves your comprehension skills. It improves your understanding skills in just few minutes. And that's the art of cracking your reading comprehension. All right, people, do you all get that? That is the right thing, alrighty? Okay, so for your comprehension, don't be worried, whenever the questions are going to be there, obviously the questions are going to be there in your examination. Read the questions first and then start reading your comprehension passage and at least keep ten minutes, okay? Like completely apart from the entire minutes, so that you can devote your time correctly to your reading comprehension. Because if you have comprehended correctly, you can literally get good marks in your examination. Alrighty, I hope that's clear. All right, people, so now coming back to interrogatives, I hope that's clear. All right, this is the fifth rule I've shared with all of you, related to interrogatives. Closed questions, just use if or whether as joining conjunction and after that subject and after that verb. In your open-ended questions, you have to use W H word as the joining conjunction and know to that. This is the fifth rule I've shared. Now moving to your imperative sentences, okay? Why we not use whether in place of if? Varish, we can do that, that's not problematic, you can do that. Okay, that's not problematic, you can do that, okay? Either if or whether, that's fine, but do not go ahead with both of them, that's gonna be wrong. All right, Varish, I hope you got the answer, now will you please stop spamming in the class? Okay? All right, all right? Now, we are moving ahead, Varish, I hope you have got your answer, my dear, okay? So stop spamming, alrighty, just kindly stop, just be a bit kind, right? Okay, now guys, we have imperative sentences, what are the imperative sentences, everybody? Imperative sentences are the sentences that deal with your command, all right? Or it deals with your order, or it deals with your advice or suggestion or any sort of request. Okay, so the entire structure of the sentence in case of conversion from direct to indirect in these type of sentences is totally different. All right, now this is going to be the sixth rule, everybody, that you all need to keep in your mind. Whenever it's a command and order, for example, if I'm asking you, keep quiet, all right? What is the tone? What is the tone? What do you guys have to concentrate here? Just look at the tone of the sentence. Everyone, if I'm telling you, like if you say that a preacher man said, keep quiet. So what am I doing? Am I commanding and ordering you? Am I doing that? Everybody, hey, Hush? Okay, that's good, alrighty, people, so now tell me, what did I do? Did I command you all? Did I order? Did I do that? Yes or no? Yeah, I've ordered you, right? Himanshu, you're right about that, right? So guys, whenever it's an order, so in all your imperative sentences, what did I tell you? You have to keep these things in, in your mind, imperative sentence is a sentence wherein we are either demanding, sorry, either we are commanding or we are ordering or we are advising someone or suggesting somebody or we are requesting someone, all right? So in all your imperative sentences, you have to catch the tone of the speaker. Okay, if, if I'm asking you, please bring me a glass of water, what am I doing? I, it is not a, sorry, it's not an order, it's not a command, right? I have requested you, how did you come to know? By the use of the word please. Please is the cut clear indication that somebody is requesting, if I'm asking you, please switch off the fan. It's a request, or if I'm ask, or if I'm just telling you, switch off the fan. Shut the door, shut the window, okay? So that seems to be a command. So what do you need to catch in all your imperative sentences? Like what is the tone of the sentence? Very important rule I'm sharing with all of you, everybody, sixth rule, it is, keep that in your mind. In all your imperative sentences, you have to catch the tone of the speaker. Is that clear, everybody? Yes, is this clear to everyone? Yes, everyone? So now here you see, keep quiet. So she commanded me to keep quiet. So what did you see? Your reported verb, it's gonna be changed as per the tone. If it's a command, commanded, if it's an order, ordered, if it's an advice, advised, if it's a suggestion, suggested. If it's a request, requested, all right? So you have to catch the tone, according to the tone will come your reported verb as well. So she commanded me to keep quiet, so what exactly is happening here? Herein, you're not using that, you're not using if or whether, you're not using like a W H word as the joining conjunction. Instead, the structure here is that you're writing the subject, then you are writing the reported verb, everybody? All right? And then you are writing the preposition too, this is very important. And with that will come first form of the verb, which is the base form of the verb, or we call it the infinitive form of the verb. That means the actual form of the verb, the, uh, the form in which the verb exists. Is it clear? Is it clear? Uh, Rithik, what are you exactly talking about here? Uh, future and other tense both in a sentence, like in what sense are you talking about? In what sense are you talking about? Hey, Vedant, hi, dear. In what sense are you talking about? He's studying boy, hello, Ashi, hi, everybody. Okay, guys, so what I was telling you all, everyone, listen to me very carefully, okay? Is a instructed and order? No, that is just an instruction, okay? Like that is just a part of an instruction, so you're gonna take that as instructed. Guys, in imperative, you just have to look at the very tense, for example, if somebody is begging you, okay? For example, if I'm saying that the beggar asked for food, okay? Right, so therein, what are you doing? Like basically you are saying that the beggar said that he needed, the beggar begged for food, that's how you're gonna change the sentence. Okay, that's what you have to keep in your mind, all right? That ma'am, two sentences come in one sentence, in one sentence. So you're like, if two tenses are there in one sentence, then you're gonna change it accordingly. For example, if it says that I completed my work and had gone to the market, okay? Then he said that what I completed, completed, past tense is changing into past perfect tense. He said that he had completed his work and then what is it? Had gone, so past perfect remains same, uh, sorry, past perfect remains same, so you will say and had gone to the market. So what did we do? We have converted the tense. You, if there are two tenses or three tenses, that's not the case. You have to just look which tense is there in which part of the sentence and then convert it accordingly as per the rule. That's not problematic, is that clear? Is that clear? I hope that is. Now, now if you have got advice or suggestion, check your sugar level regularly. So she advised me, it's an advice, to check my sugar level regularly. This is important, guys, you have to use to the preposition along with the base form of the verb. Next, please lend me a pen, it's a request, the word please is a cut clear indication that somebody is requesting you. So she requested me, requested is the verb you're gonna use, then to is the preposition and lend, very easy and straightforward. Is that clear? We are done with our present tense rules, second, uh, was your past tense, third was your future tense, right? And the fourth thing I talked about what, what did I tell you guys? Fourth thing, fourth thing, I talked about you, sorry, I talked about the questions, right? So guys, just keep every rule in your mind, now we are dealing with your imperative sentences, I hope that's clear to everybody right there, okay? Very important. Now modals, guys, very important. Your will, it changes to your would. Your can, it changes to your could, so this is happening from your direct to indirect. All right, so if you see will, it's gonna change into would and you know with modals, okay? We use first form of the verb. So you are not going to play with it, okay? You're not going to change it. All right, no change in your actual verb. Whatever change would be there, that is going to take place in your modals only. All right, for example, he said I should come. Okay, so now I'm going to translate it saying, he said that he should come, that's it. Or if he's saying I shall come, I'm going to transform it into, he said that he should come, I transform shall into should. Clear, everyone? Yes? So, can changes to could, must changes to your had to, this is very important. A lot of students commit mistake with this, okay? Keep this in your mind. When must is given in your direct speech, it is going to be transformed into had to in your indirect speech. Keep it in your mind, everybody, all right? Shall changes to your should, okay? May changes to your might, keep this in your mind, all right? But if in your direct speech you see could or you see might, you see need, you see ought, you see should or you see would. All right, if you see the converted part, I mean the very past form of all these verbs, modals, then you're not going to ever change them. So if the sentence is, I use would come. So, now for example, Shalini informed, now if the sentence is, Shalini said. All right, then comma, inverted comma begins. And it says I use would come. So here and what is the going to be the transformed sentence, guys? I guess both in a sentence, they are joined with conjunctions. Uh, Rithik, my dear, are you asking the question in the context of the reported speech? Or are you asking the question in the context of the tenses? What are you exactly asking me? If you had asked me the question in the context of the reported speech, I told you what is supposed to be done, right? Is that clear? Alrighty, people, okay? So see, Shalini said I use would come, what is going to be the answer, guys? Everybody come on in the comment section. Shalini said that, right? I use would come. So here and we will keep it the way it is, we are not going to change it. Would will remain would, so keep it in your mind, these are the mistakes that you all commit and such questions are gonna be there for all of you. All right, guys? Yes, you are right, Tisha, very good, Shalini confirmed that I should come, that is also right, Sushant, okay? If you see that option, that's okay and even you could have returned, Shalini informed that I use would come, that's okay. Alrighty, hey, Kriti, hi, everybody. All right, Rithik Dada, you need to be a bit more clear, my dear, and stop spamming in the class, okay? Definitely, I'm gonna look at your comment. It's just that you have to be a bit more clear, like are you asking in the context of the reported speech or the tenses? Okay, I hope that's clear, Shalini said that I use would come. Right, Alita, you're right about that, okay? I hope that's clear now. Okay, I hope that's clear, models clear. Right, now the pronouns, everybody, very important. You know your pronouns change, your I, me, us, we, mine, our, changes into he, she, it, they, him, his, her, hers, them, their or theirs, as per the speaker. Keep that in your mind, like for me, if I'm saying that, like I'm saying, for example, I use is telling me, uh, ma'am, I'm not well. Now I'm telling this to Savita, for example, so I'll be like, I use told me that he was not well. Now I'm going to like actually like refer him as the third person. So what am I doing? I am the speaker, accordingly, I'm changing the pronouns. So this comes through practice, when you guys are looking at the questions, you'll come to know that which pronoun is being used in whose name's context. Clear, everybody? Yeah, Kushi, we are gonna have that once, I'm thorough with all the rules with all of you, okay? I want to tell you all, all the rules, so that you guys don't really commit any mistake. It's one of the topics that can actually confuse you all, you need to understand it in detail. Is it clear to everybody? Yes, you all got that, everyone? Right? Now let's move ahead, very important and the last thing that you all need to remember, which is what are the changes in time and place? So these questions would have all the changes correctly. Keep in mind that you all are looking at it so carefully, okay? Now it says this already. It says tomorrow, tomorrow changes to the next day or the following day. This the has got its own importance, because we are specially referring to the next day. So when you are trying to convert the sentence, the examiner can definitely confuse you with this. Wherein, in one of the options, he just says next day and in the other option, he says the next day or the following day. Don't be confused, be clever, keep your mind open, all the rules must de- directly come like in front of you and you should go ahead with the right answer. All right, people? So I'll see you tomorrow, Mamta said. So Mamta said that she would see me the next day, this is how you actually changed it, okay? And here you know I'll, this was I will see. And we have converted well into but, keep it in your mind, okay? Clear? Yes, Mayank, it's gonna take place, okay? Once we are done with this. Then yesterday changes to the previous day or the day before. Again, the has got its own importance, don't mess it up. So I saw Shagun yesterday, what is the tense, everybody? What is the tense, guys? What is the tense that you see in this particular statement, everyone? What is the tense given? Everyone? Tense, tense? Everyone, come on, tense is easy, not that difficult question that I've asked, right? Okay, so I think I will have to tell this to all of you, this is your simple past, right? Simple past changes into right, past tense, but what past tense, Mayank Samradhi? Simple past, this is what you have to tell me, Sushant, you are being so very much exact, very good. So this changes into your past perfect, had seen. All right, keep that in your mind. So what are we gonna do here and she said that she had seen Shagon the day before, this is the conversion. Now tonight, or we say this night, this is going to be changed into that night, all right? I'm going to a party tonight. So Raj said that he was going to a party that night, okay? So guys, whenever you are being asked to check like what is the going to be the correct indirect speech? You have to keep in your mind all the rules. You have to see if there is a model. You have to see if it's an imperative sentence, if it's a closed question, if it's a question and what tense it is, okay? And what are the changes in time and place and changes in pronouns? You have to keep a lot of things in your mind while you're looking at the correct question. Is that clear, guys? Are you getting that? Then, moving ahead, this changes to your that. All right, for example, I'm getting a new week dress this week, she said. She said that she was getting a new dress that week, so this changes to that. Also, guys, hair changes to there, keep it in your mind. Is that clear to everybody? Yes? Other term, my dear, would you please hold your horses a bit, because you may be well worth with all the rules. A lot of students had been demanding this session, because they wanted a lot of rules to be clear. So kindly hold your horses, you can come after like five to seven minutes, if you're only interested in mentee, my dear, would you please do that? Just be a little more kind to everybody right there and stop spamming, okay? Tonight means yes, Kushi, tonight means this night and we should change it to that night, all right? Is that clear? Now, next changes to following, okay? Don't be confused that you're changing next to the following, that is wrong, a lot of students do that. It just changes to your following, so Manish said. Okay, so here in Manish said, what, what did he say? Manish said I'm appearing for exam the next day, alrighty? So here and it is changing into what? It is going to be changed into following, keep this in your mind. Manish said that he was appearing. So you are, I'm appearing, your present continuous is changing into your past continuous was appearing for his exam. You're going to change the pronoun as well the following day. So you know the here is already given, you have just changed next. A lot of students, what do you, what do they do? They just write the twice, that's wrong, okay? That is wrong. Is that clear to everyone? Yes? I hope that's making sense to everybody, all is that clear to everyone yes I hope that's making sense to everybody alright and now we are moving ahead Sunil that's what I'm doing there and now okay now changes to your them for example she said I'm writing a letter now alrighty people then you have to change it to word like now it changes to them she said that she was writing a letter then pretty easy and straightforward is that clear is that clear what is the meaning of that then when we changing now to them yeah and Shiva said it means fill okay is that clear everybody okay so now then will remain then then will remain then okay it's not gonna change okay even if like you are getting that it is also going to be same also guys one more thing if you see these okay these changes to your those keep it in your mind alright so we are thorough with all the rules everyone I hope that you all got that clearly okay now we are gonna move towards our very questions and let me see how many of you have heard me so clearly ten questions would be there for everyone the code is right in front of you all which is three seven double eight eight six zero eight alright people here we go everyone this is the code right in front of you all and just let me know that what exactly is going to be the right answers now for the questions that I'm gonna post so this is the code everyone join in as quick as you all can three seven double eight eight six zero eight be quick everybody three seven double eight eight six zero eight come on come on guys be quick ten questions would be there for everyone right there yes guys join in and also just give me uh like a thumbs up in the comment section that you all have shared the link of the session with all your friends have you all done that yes everybody have you all done that yes or no have you all done that okay six students are in come on guys be quick in joining in okay guys alright ten students are in guys come on be quick if you all can be quick then we can go ahead with our quest easily alright okay you are unicorn alrighty here we go and thank you Savita thank you so much alright yeah that's right eleven students come on come on everyone be quick okay I'm gonna start in a bit you guys need to be like be very fast about this and guys do not forget to show your love do not forget to like the session how many likes do I have so far everyone let's hit a target everybody twelve students are in already Meenu dear I'm teaching on the channel An Academy nine and ten experts okay so my sessions take place right at two o'clock as well as five P M okay on a daily basis so you all can just catch me right there okay alrighty people come on thirteen students okay so I'm gonna go ahead everybody alright your strawberry okay everyone here we go let's have a look at the questions how many of you are gonna give the right answer the god ask who are you okay what is the transformation the god ask who he was the god asked me who he was the god asked me who he was the god asked who I was what is the right answer everyone so what is the right answer come on everyone you all can or Shifa okay six more seconds to go let me see how many of you are gonna give the right answer for this one and I really don't want to be like completely shocked very good nine students but what happened to the other students everybody where is the confusion didn't I tell you all the guard ask who he was okay so here in like the the this question is basically being asked to you directly you have to use your mind everyone this is what I told you all okay the correct answer is your the part the guard asked me who he was no like the question is who are you the question is so direct to you this is what you all have to understand everyone this is what you all have to understand right so D is the right answer the guard asked who I was as I told you all that you after immediately after W H what you are gonna write the subject and immediately after that you are gonna write the word so nine students commendable very good thank you for giving me the correct answers okay here we go and let's have a look at the leaderboard everybody so who all are there on the leaderboard and we have got Shazee very nice good to see you you are the fastest one Ujwal S Smith and Kushi Pafi Alita and we have Sushan Nicholas Dimple and Tisha great guys alrighty people moving ahead uh Kushi that's the thing dear that's the trick you have to understand if the question is just saying that who are you he the question is being asked directly to you you have to consider yourself as a speaker now okay she said bring a glass of water please so she commands me to bring a glass of water she requested me to bring a glass of water she asked me to brought a glass of water or she ordered me to bring her a glass of water what exactly is the right answer what exactly is the right answer everybody she said bring a glass of water please already three two one and the time is up alright so let's have a look what does it say twelve students very well done she requested me to bring a glass of water that is very right everybody it's not a command what did I tell you all whenever you see the word please it's such a it's such a direct reflection that you are requesting somebody if you are asking your mom please give me one more paratha okay or please give me a bowl of rajma or please give me a slice of pizza what are you doing you are not commanding her what are you doing you are requesting her why how do you come to know because there is this use of the word please right that's what you have to keep in your mind alright and she asked me to brought a glass of water what did I tell you with two we use first form of the verb so bring is the first form of the verb the infinitive form of the verb so brought is anyway wrong and she ordered me to bring her a glass of water that is again wrong it just she requested you have to check the tone accordingly you have to go ahead with the verb that's it okay let's move ahead now we are moving ahead everybody let's have a look at the leaderboard what is the leaderboard telling us how many of you are there on the leaderboard and Shazee was the fastest one Kashim Mana Sashan Diksha Dimple Aditya Tisha Shami and Prithvi great guys very good now let's move to the next question question number three on your screen everybody let's see how many are gonna nail it well she said shut the door okay now look at the camera very tall she asked me whether I would shut the door she ordered me to shut the door she said that I should shut the door or she shouted and said to shut the door what is it what is the right answer okay she ordered me to shut the door that is very right guys anyway you cannot go ahead with us okay because if I'm asking you like if I'm telling you shut the door that is a command I'm not asking you I'm not seeking your permission okay she said definitely will not be there should is not going to be there and the last option is definitely not there okay everybody so fourteen students very well done really commendable and very nice let's move ahead towards the leaderboard everybody and we have got a lot of new students okay professor lover is there okay Shazee Kushi are the fastest one Mana Diksha Dimples Ashant Tisha Pratvi Professor Lover and Ujwal great guys alrighty we go ahead now no D was not the answer at all okay she ordered me to shut the door question number four everybody on your screen here we go the teacher said the wind is a renewable energy source so let me see if you guys like know the answer the teacher said that the wind was a renewable energy source the teacher said that the wind is a renewable energy source or the teacher exclaimed that the wind is a renewable energy source or the teacher tells that the wind was a renewable energy source yes fifteen students guys seem like this is something that I should tell you all right away whenever we are talking about something that is universally known and which is like a fact or something which is factual for example one one and one makes two this is what this is something which is a fact right this is something which is a kevich uh remain same throughout the world right one and one will definitely be making two only and not three so in that particular context you are never going to change the tense of that sentence okay so here the wind is a renewable energy source that's a fact universally known to everybody so in that context you guys are not going to change the tense of the sentence okay also guys when you see that the reported verb is given in the present tense everybody listen to me carefully I'm sharing something important with all of you whenever you see that like the reported verb is in present tense like instead of said if it would have been say and the sentence would have been different and not a universal fact then you are never going to change the tense okay because it the reported verb if it's given in the present tense never change the tense of the sentence you will never do that is it clear is it clear harsh for example if I'm saying the teacher says I am not well so what is the reported verb it is says it is in present tense okay so you will say the teacher says that she is not well so when I said I am not well it was in present tense now when you are reporting it you are saying she is not well again is it is again present tense okay so you have not changed the tense why because the reporting verb was says but if it is the teacher said I am not well then you are gonna change the tense why because your reported verb is in the past tense so keep this in your mind I hope that's clear now harsh I hope that's clear hey Anvesh is that clear yes now let's move ahead eleven students very well done okay so we are never gonna change the tense of the sentences which are literally the facts okay alrighty people so who all are here and I've got Shazee by the first position Mana Dimple Diksha Tisha Kushi Professor Lover you are the fastest one that's pretty good then Ujwal S Smith and Prithvi now moving to the next option already question number five with this we are almost halfway through our quiz right so Ronit said I must attend the meeting how are you going to transform this alright okay harsh it's clear now great so Ronit said that he had to attend the meeting Ronit said that it was must that he attend the meeting Ronit said he must attend the meeting or Ronit said that he would attend the meeting what is the right answer eight more seconds for everybody right there and tell me the correct answer please alright three two one and the time is up already let's have a look what is it really saying Ronnie said that he had to attend the meeting very good must is getting changed into had to very good students very nice let's move ahead and let's look at the leaderboard everybody what is the leaderboard telling us alright so what does it say Shazee we are the fastest one Mana Diksha Temple Professor Lover Tisha Kushi Prithvi Ujwal Sushant great guys pretty good let's move ahead to the question number six so we are beginning with the last set of five questions everybody hey Falguni hi dear the student said ma'am please extend the deadline how are you going to do like transform this the student asked the teacher to extend the deadline or the student said if the teacher would extend the deadline the student requested ma'am to extend the deadline or the student said that ma'am should extend the deadline twelve more seconds everybody must changes to had to Shazee that's very right okay that's very right and that's the right answer that you are giving in here in already so yeah twenty students very well done okay it's a request and that is why we are going to use the reported verb requested and you are gonna say two plus extend okay that's the right thing now let's look at the leaderboard what is the leaderboard telling us alright what is it actually talking about here we go Shazee by the first position Mana Yadi fastest one Diksha Dimple Tisha Professor Lover Kushi Prithvi Sushan and Asmit very good guys already so Medhi are very late to join in my dear we are left with just three more questions Dinesh said I was playing football how are you going to transform this so Dinesh said that he was playing football Dinesh said that he would be playing football Dinesh said that he had been playing football or Dinesh said that he plays football so thirteen more seconds for everybody right there and tell me the correct answer please okay so what should be the right answer everyone tell me the correct answer time is up everybody voted so Dinesh said that he was why guys why what is happening what did I tell you all was playing this is what past continues past continues changes to past perfect continues everybody chose five students what a great disappointment everyone what did you all do past continues changes into past perfect continues everybody this is I was playing how like thirteen students like a lot of you have given the wrong answer nineteen students almost twenty students have given the wrong answer everyone what is the rule didn't I tell you was playing past continues changes into past perfect continues what is past perfect continues had been playing had plus been plus first form of the word plus I N G guys what happened what really happened to all these thirteen students what happened come on yeah what are you people doing guys was playing it is it should have been changed into had been playing five students I really don't know like if you guys knew it or not but really commendable and a big round of applause very good guys alright let's move ahead everybody let's have a look at the leaderboard who are there on the leaderboard yes like seriously or damn Shifa what did you people do Shazee good very good and you were the fastest one Shazee really good Tisha Professor Lover Mana Diksha Dimple Kushi Prithvi Sushant and Asmit great guys alrighty here we go question number eight on your screen everybody let's have a look what does it say I use said where have you been okay so I use asked me where I had been I used told me where I should have been I used told me where I was or I used said that I had not been there so what is the right answer hey Chanda hi dear so everybody what is the right answer here and what is the tense that you see in the very question what is the tense that we see everyone what is it I use asked me where I had been very good nineteen students thank you for giving me the correct answer I really didn't know what happened to all of you in the very previous question okay Shazee by the first position Professor Lover Tisha Mana Yadi fastest one Diksha Dimple Kashi Prithvi Sushan and Asmit great guys now we are gonna move to the the second last question which is question number nine and here we have on your screen the lawyer said the law always believes in the evidence what is it the lawyer said that the law always believed in the evidence the lawyer said that the law should always believe in the evidence the lawyer said that the law always believes in the evidence or the lawyer said that the law has always believed in the evidence what is the right answer uh I um A R H editing we are here dealing with the C B S C board my dear alrighty here we go guys so what is the right answer eleven students have given the right answer guys what did I tell you all whenever it's a fact it's a it's a universal fact right so what are you going to do you are going to keep the tense of the sentence the same way you are not gonna change it ever okay the law always believes in the evidence that's the actual true fact okay the law is always going to believe in the evidence the proves that you are presenting right so here in the correct answer is your option number C the lawyer said that the law always believes in the evidence we are not gonna change the tense at all keep that in your mind it's one of the important factors in your reported speech so let's have a look at the leaderboard everybody what is the leaderboard telling us so Shazee was at the first position and then we have Mana Yadi fastest one very good Tisha Diksha Professor Lover Kushi Prithvi Dimples Sushan and Ujwal now we are moving to the next question which is question number ten and this is going to be the last question of this session so what does it say Divya said I cannot attend your wedding okay so what are you going to say here okay what will you say here what will you say okay Divya said that she could not attend your wedding that is very right alright that is the right answer now let's have a look at the leaderboard everybody Shazee Mana Tisha Diksha Professor Lover Kushi Prithvi and Dimples Sushan Kushi and Ujwal Shazee for very many congratulations to you already so here and what are we going to do like people just make sure that you all are revising the rules so clearly because that's really important for everybody right there and Shazee for very many congratulations guys this is important for everybody right there to pay attention to what is really needed okay do not just try to go ahead with anything that's gonna be really complicating okay alrighty people so now we are gonna move ahead everybody with our session make sure that you all are gonna like revise this topic so perfectly for your good because that's what is really needed now moving ahead everyone coming to Unacademy subscription features we have got a lot of features for everybody you get to learn live from the comfort of your home unlimited access to all the courses top educators of India on one single platform to guide you all well regular doubt clearing and answer writing sessions would also be Unlimited access to all the courses, top educators of India on one single platform to guide you all well. Regular doubt clearing and answer writing sessions would also be there. Exhaustive coverage of the entire syllabus, mentorship and guidance would definitely be there. Study material in the form of PDF practice test, live test series and batch courses. So you would have daily practice sections, weekly mock test studies, live quizzes, daily M C Q and subjective test series, everybody. Now we have got like we had started with some of the batches which are really amazing, like doubt clearing班started on eighth of November. Then we had the crash coach with uh like which was like all subjects. It started on eighth of November, okay? Then we have, uh, we had rapid revision on math, science and social science. It also started on eighth of November and then for tenth years also, we had math, science and social science were started on eighth of November, okay? So guys, whenever we come up with any batch, kindly make sure you all are becoming a part of it. Then coming to Bugs Mountains, an opportunity for all the learners to report any inappropriate content in the video. Need the first one to report a particular issue to claim your prize. Report any inappropriate content using the form which is given in the description below. Now coming to your iconic subscription, personal mentor would be there for everybody. Live doubt solving sessions would also be there. Weekly reports would definitely be there. Parent connecting would also be there. We are gonna connect with your parents as well to tell them that yes, of course you are doing, uh, like of course the student is doing well. Study planner would also be there and all the benefits of UnAcademy subscription would also be there. Sumed, we are gonna have the session tomorrow, okay? Just, uh, it has already been scheduled. The link of the session is given in the description below. Check it out. We are gonna deal with the five hundred questions. So make sure you are, you all are definitely going in for it. Then coming to your iconic subscription, guys, like we have got different monthly plans. You guys can go ahead with forty-eight months, thirty-six months, twenty-four months, eighteen months, fifteen months, twelve months, nine months, six months and three months. P S H ten is the code, guys. Make sure that you guys are definitely going in with this because this is going to give you all straight ten percent discount and would also help you all score good marks for your upcoming examinations, okay? So being your educator, I would like to tell you all to try to go for a longer tenure. That's always beneficial, okay? UnAcademy free special class features, guys, live real-time interaction would be there using chat and emojis, ask the questions using the question tab, live poll options for quests and poll leaderboard compete with your friends as well. I've got a special class right at eight o'clock today and I'm gonna deal with the topic tenses, guys. I'm gonna take up all your doubts. So be right there. Do not forget to enroll into the class, okay? So thank you, everybody. Kindly subscribe the channel, UnAcademy nine and ten experts. If you haven't done it yet because you are gonna find me there on that very particular channel, okay? Right at two P M and five P M in the evening. So do not forget to like the session and share it with your friends as well. Alright, you can always find the important PDFs in the link which is given in the description below. So let's crack it.